This is the Deerfield School Committee meeting from December 8th, 2020, calling it to order. I thought I'd start this evening with a brief remembrance for a young man, Cole Baranowski, who recently passed, a Frontier Regional student, who also happens to be a graduate or had gone to Deerfield Elementary School. So I would ask if everyone could please join me in a moment of silence remembering Cole and his family. So we'll start with that this evening. So, thank you. Thank you very much for that, everyone. Again, it's a tough time of year to have this type of thing happen, but I know the Frontier community has pulled together and the whole Union 38 and the region has really pulled in behind the Baranowski family and the other young, the family of the other young people involved. So, we're ready to roll on. We have the review and approve the minutes of November 10th, 2020.
Make the motion to approve the minutes for November 10th, 2020, Trevor McDaniel.
Second that.
And David seconds. Did anyone have any comments or corrections or anything? Hearing none. I would ask for a roll call vote in favor of approving the minutes. Ken cut it back, yes. David Sharp?
Yes.
Carrie Etchels?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. The financial statement and warrants. I know we all received a financial report from Shelley, but I will turn it over at this point in time to Shelley.
Great. So nine warrants were reviewed totaling $76,421.51 since the last meeting. Thank you for signing those electronically. I failed to attach the actual expense reports. Thank you, David, for letting me know that. I did just send them to you all. There's nothing new to report on. No new concerns from last month, but absolutely, if you have questions, I'm happy to take them. The biggest update is with school lunch, which is really just a snapshot. There's no major changes since last meeting. I did give you the updated revenue and expenditures. We are year-to-date a net income of just shy of $3,000, and that is because we moved all of those wages off last month. You all agreed to move those to general funds, so we made that switch. So we're looking at a positive account balance of $28,000 at this point. So we do anticipate that there may be a little bit of surplus month to month since we're not paying wages, but we'll just let that build up in the account. We don't expect it to be a huge amount, and then we'll assess whether or not we can put some wages back on here for next school year. And then the only other thing is that, you know, Darius and Tina and I are in discussion about the FY22 budget. We're a little bit behind compared to prior years. Normally, we would likely be presenting at least a draft right now at this meeting, but we're hoping to have that draft done for January. Obviously, we don't have any state numbers. We don't know what revenue looks like for Chapter 20 or anything along those lines. But we are moving ahead with a level service approach for next year as our first draft, meaning we're not cutting any programs, we're not reducing staff, we're looking to move forward with everything as it exists at this point, and then we'll continue conversations from there. So, in the early phases of that, but hopefully January we'll have some more numbers for you to take a closer look at.
It does look like we have, you know, just looking at the, I guess the conference committee got together and it looks like they're looking at a level service as well from the state. So we'll see when that comes out, but.
See what that means.
Yeah.
Any questions for Shelley or everyone pretty clear?
Yep.
And I would say to Darius, thank you for sending, I don't know if the rest of the committee got it yet, but I see that the Capitol requests went into the town. So, thank you for following through on that, Shelley and Darius, to make sure it made it into the offices. Appreciate that. Public comment. I have two statements that were submitted this evening. I will start with a statement from Frontier Regional and Union 38 Special Education Parent Advisory Council, also known as CPAC, S-E-P-A-C. And because that acronym is in this document, I just wanted to mention that that's what CPAC stands for, Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Dated December 8th, 2020, "The Special Education Parent Advisory Council has spoken to families who had difficulty with last week's precautionary closure. We would like to share some of those concerns for this committee to consider as we all move forward. District administrators did not communicate with families or the CPAC about how the temporary closure would impact special education students. Our families know that DESI has urged schools to keep high-priority special education students learning in person regardless of the model the rest of the district is using. This led them to presume the district would continue to provide in-person learning to high-priority students as they had with the phased reopening in September. The logistics of this transition were especially complicated for our families. Disabled students require special supervision and support that is difficult to get in place on short notice. In the midst of securing childcare, families also had to coordinate schedules with the many teachers and providers who meet with their child on a daily basis. Caregivers and teachers pieced together schedules as best they could, but many students did not get the full amount of IEP services. For those who did get services set up, the remote format was widely ineffective. The CPAC has highlighted the issues with remote learning for this population at previous school committee meetings. DESI has also acknowledged these issues and put out specific guidance to ensure disabled students are being treated equitably by having as much in-person learning as possible. Beyond the educational impact, we want to share with you the emotional toll on families. Disabled students rely on consistency, and the sudden shift left nearly all of them struggling emotionally and behaviorally. This undue stress impacts both students and their families for weeks. In a normal year, special education families barely survive a week-long break from school after being without support all spring and summer. This extra week was unbearable. Parents' frustration grew even deeper as they learned that many teachers were working in the buildings. Their children were home having anxiety, behavioral issues, unable to access their education because they were told it was safe to be in the buildings, yet teachers were on site. The optics of this sow further distrust among special education families. The CPAC Board has been in communication with Darius regarding these concerns. We are hopeful that the district will resolve these issues prior to any future precautionary closures. We thank you for all your time and continued collaboration. Holly Johnson, co-chair, Ajay Sirone, co-chair, Carrie Thurlo, secretary, and Crystal Brown treasurer." And the second, oops, I'm not finding it right now. There was a second, just a moment. Had myself all organized earlier, but I forgot where I put it. Oh, there it is. There was a second note sent, and this comes from Missy and Melissa Novak Hale. Dated December 6th, 2020, "Public comment for the DES School Committee meeting 12/8/2020. Please present this comment at the DES School Committee meeting for Missy Novak of South Deerfield. I would like to share some concerns about the progression to Phase 3 of reopening in light of the recent increases in cases, both in the Deerfield community as well as within the state. I would encourage the committee at the very least to discuss whether this is the appropriate point in time to increase the number of individuals in the school building and to consider postponing this progression to mid-January when there will be more knowledge as to the impact of spread from both the Thanksgiving holiday as well as other holidays of this season such as Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and Christmas that are also likely to result in an increase in cases. At the Board of Health meeting last week, there was quite a bit of talk about following data, in particular, data that shows that schools are not super-spreaders, a situation that was part of the concern that caused schools to close in March. I get concerned when we talk about this data and don't point out that we are all part of research in motion. The data we are talking about is constantly evolving and will likely be analyzed for years to come with new insights to be learned along the way. It is unlikely we will know the true impact of our efforts to open schools for weeks or months, and when it comes to long-term assessment of learning or mental health, parents, both for in-person with masks, for in-person in masks with distancing measures and remote, closed parents, those impacts may not surface for years. The truth is that the data that we know at this moment has limitations. In the earlier months of the pandemic, kids were more isolated and had become less so as the pandemic has drawn on. As we have all returned to some activities, there has been an increase in cases. Quote, "As of November 26th, 1.3 million children have tested positive for COVID-19 since the onset of the pandemic. The number of new child COVID-19 cases reported this week, nearly 154,000, is the highest weekly increase since the pandemic began." End quote. There is a link reference here that I'm not going to read, but it's, I think that's, it's referencing where the number was drawn from. "Outside of typically private schools or larger university systems, testing has been primarily limited to symptomatic individuals. We don't know, and have not at any point in this pandemic, had enough testing to do widespread routine testing on everyone. If we are limiting testing to symptomatic individuals, we should acknowledge that." Quote, "A recent study found that symptom screening that evaluated for all known COVID-19 symptoms and was conducted by healthcare professionals in a hospital setting failed to identify nearly half, percents 45% of all pediatric patients infected with the virus. It does appear that school cases are typically brought in from the community, but as the community cases increase, the risk to our teachers, staff, and children increases well, and it is even more important that mitigation efforts are followed. I am concerned that doubling the in-school population will impact our ability to continue mitigation efforts at the same level that we have been able to sustain thus far. If we can continue to keep everyone six feet apart and masked, our chances of having less cases in school can continue to be high. The biggest concern is navigating lunch and recess, unstructured times with an increased population and cooler weather. Outside of an arbitrary timeline and pressure from the state, I'm not sure there is a pressing need to increase the school population at this time in light of these concerns. If there are specific students who are struggling or have special considerations, I do think there should be space to bring these students in, in a smaller, more controlled increase in school population. Thank you for your consideration of these concerns, Missy Novak." So, let me see if I can cleverly get back to the meeting here, join you folks. Those are the public comments that had been received prior to the meeting. They're both actually kind of a nice, kind of, but a pretty good segue into Item B under unfinished business. So I'd like to suggest that we sort of revamp the agenda a little bit and go to Item B under unfinished business. Do we have, I didn't notice, do we have a representative from?
Yep, Kelsey Cropp, I believe, is the rep coming on, and she's going to come on at 5:30, so I've always told her, like, half hour, usually a little bit more.
Okay. That's good. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't see her yet, so, thank you. So I just thought maybe that's an opportunity for us as a committee to talk a little bit about it. I don't know. I think I saw most names at last week's Board of Health meeting. I saw Mary and Trevor, well, Trevor was obviously there, and Mary, I saw your name, and I wasn't sure if Carrie was there or not, or David, just listening in. But, I mean, there was a great deal of discussion around this whole timeframe right now between Thanksgiving and Christmas. The Boards of Health did support the return to school under the current model that we're under. We, as a school, have been looking at a more robust or a transition into Phase 3, and so I didn't know if Darius or Tina wanted to talk to that at this point in time a little bit, and then we could maybe, as a school committee, discuss our thoughts a little bit, so.
I think it'd be good, Tina, you gave a kind of an overview of, giving everybody and everybody watching on board, where exactly is Phase 3, some of the statistics you've given me regarding what do we find up, and what does it mean about more students, quote-unquote, more time, that kind of stuff. We talked prior to this, or anything else you want to say, Tina? Just go ahead.
No pressure.
I was reaching for the mute button, as you were too. Of course, I want to talk about this. Just going back to what you were saying about the Board of Health meeting, Ken, the prior one, prior to this Board of Health meeting, the, so what was that, like, two weeks ago? They did mention that they were putting a precautionary week of remote in place, knowing that Deerfield was going to go back four days a week to provide a buffer. So, the Board of Health knew that what our plan was, right, Trevor?
Yes.
You were on there, okay. So, since then, we've done faculty surveys, I've done town hall meetings, we've had families submit the survey results of what they would want to come back at, and surprisingly, so this is going to kind of be contrary to some of the data that was given, we have 78% of our families wanting, or children, I should say, wanting to have their kids come back four days a week. That is up from 72% about two weeks ago. So in the midst of all this, families are saying they need this, the kids need it, they're excited. The other thing is, if you really look at it for increasing capacity in the building, we are going to have about 240 students in the building, that's about 50% capacity to other years. Because typically, we run at about 409, 411 students, this year we're down to 313. So if you're looking at the numbers and looking at decreasing capacity, if you will, any other year, we're one cohort when we're in four days a week. So, the other thing that I want to mention is, our mitigation strategies are working. They're in place. Students are following procedures with fidelity. I had a new IA star on Monday, and I asked her, because I want to know, we feel comfortable, I'll speak for my cellphone here, I feel comfortable being in the building, I think the teachers that are in all the time feel comfortable in our building, but I wanted to know what an outside person would think when they're coming in, and she said she was so amazingly surprised that she felt comfortable. Kids, when they get up from lunch, they actually put their masks on. They remember that when they're standing, they have to have their masks on, and she was surprised, and we're talking about first grade. She was in a first grade classroom. So, and then the other piece that I want the committee to be aware of is nothing is changing. So, lunch and recess remain the same. We're staying in our pods. We have, I have a waterfall recess schedule that I'd be happy to share with you, where they're scheduled way outside of, like, one is on the South Millfield, one is at the structure, one is behind by the pavilion, so we're not coming in contact. They're staying in their own pods. We're going back to staggered starts and dismissals, so we're not going to have any more children interacting or congested, if you will, bring those high congestion times, because we planned for that. Darius, I know that we've talked a lot, is there anything else that I need to highlight or that you're thinking about? Any other questions from the school committee?
This is Trevor. I just want to thank you, you and the administration and the teachers and staff for all the planning. I mean, that's, it's an amazing accomplishment to kind of make sure kids are not kind of interacting and they're on each side of the building and they're, you know, all the, and the kids are learning, you know, so well to keep, you know, safe and keep their masks on and stuff. I just want to thank you for all that work. I know it's hard. I know the teachers are working extremely hard to teach that and to keep the kids doing that stuff. It's not easy. This whole process is miserably hard, and you're doing a great job. So, thank you.
Great.
I appreciate, I'm sorry, go ahead, Darius.
Well, no, I was just going to just chime in that, you know, I think we have a pretty clear understanding of the optics of it, when the numbers are up, why are you bringing back more days, but I guess the other, the argument to be had, and I guess this is the place to have that argument, is in the sense, or the discussion, we have to argue, discussion is that, you know, numbers are up, but is the numbers in a single classroom, which is its own pod, increase the levels of risk? If we're saying it's safe to be in the building, do, is it going an extra day in that building, in that same group of students who are, you know, there's not a whole lot happening between when they go home at night and they come back in the morning, you know, is that really changing the level of risk to where we feel that we should really only be doing it, you know, twice in a week rather than four times a week? Where are they going on those off days and that kind of stuff? So, that's kind of, I think, where it kind of boils down. You know, Tina and I talked about it, we really see, we understand that we're all concerned, just like we understand all the concerns. Should we, you know, I raised the debate, should we be in school right now with the rise in our community? And right now, we're saying that as long as we can control which populations are going into our building and being able to track the cases, that's where we have our confidence. I think once we can't feel that we can't keep up with the tracking of the cases, and I say that to a Board of Health member that's sitting at the table here tonight, as soon as we aren't confident that we can track it, I think is when we have to close. So, that's kind of where we're at. Like Tina and I said, it's, in previous conversation, it's, you know, we hear it, we see the other side, but we also say, you know, this is the other perspective on that. The idea was also to, you know, the question that was brought up is why are we doing this right before the break? Why don't we just wait till after the break? Well, you know, Tina talked to me about, you know, the idea that they're going to be able to work out any of the issues that they're having, you know, between now and the break. So, I mean, that's the positive side for it. You know, the negative side is, you know, what is the, I think I've said it, is what is the increased amount of risk of, you're talking about three days, you know, we start on Monday, you're talking about three more days of contact over any day period. You know, what is, you know, is that, is that too much? You know, I guess that's kind of where it's at.
Nick, I think one of the discussions we had at the Board of Health meeting was that we almost, you know, we feel like the school is a safe spot because of all the protocols and everything that's happened, and we do worry, you know, on the days that we're not in, you know, where are the kids going? Are they going, you know, to grandma's or some other, you know, another family washing them? Maybe we're staying home, and I'm sure some are. There's a mixture of just kind of childcare and what we're doing as far as, you know, taking care of the kids or helping them when they're not in the building, and I, you know, I almost feel like the exposure when they're in the school is safer than kind of not knowing where they go and then come back, and maybe that's all figured out, and it's just a thought, you know, like, it seems to work the four days, why not the fifth day? So, that's kind of where we're at on that. We are, we are watching this like a hawk, so it's not like, you know, we're going to make this decision and never, never go back. So every day, I mean, Carolyn's on the phone, you know, literally morning to night, and we're managing all the other stuff with it, and so we will keep watching and working with the administration, Darius, and our, and all the, you know, school nurse and the county nurse and our town nurse, what's happening, where can we, you know, do we have our hands on this? And any moment that we feel like it's beyond our fingertips, we can't figure this out, we take a pause, and we will do that again. And that's difficult for the families that, you know, we heard from the first letter, it's really disruptive to a lot of people, and, but we're trying to balance that safety and education, and it's really hard to do both.
Mary, I see you unmuted there, so go ahead.
Can you tell us a little bit about the medical aspect of it, a couple of things? So, how are your processes are working in school if you have a teacher that needs to report a student is coughing, or how that's working out? And then the second part of that is, we've asked parents to keep their students home, we've asked staff to stay home, and if they have any of the symptoms, just tell us a little bit about the impact of that.
Great question, Mary. Oops, there's some feedback. So, the procedures for symptoms that are, for children that are showing symptoms in the school are working really well. The nurse comes down and get them, there's a waiting area. Right now, we have a new, we haven't started it yet, but I know that Katie went and did some training on it. We have the antigen testing, which is going to help us. Those students end up going home, most of the time after a nurse assessment, and they have COVID testing before they can come back. So, yes, if you're asking, are we sending students home on a daily basis, that possibly do not have, so far, yes, they're going home, they're getting COVID tested. We're kind of excited about the antigen testing. We just had a conversation on Katie, and I know that with Katie, and I know this is a side note, because then we can get started with our contact tracing ahead of time, and we're good to go. I should let you know that. We have all of our seating charts in place, our lunch seating charts, our bus seating charts, so that our contact tracing is set. So at any moment we can go forward with that, we have not had to use it. And our staff have been fabulous, so we're able to do some remote if they're, if they're not feeling well, they can work remotely. We have IAs that are, they're working closely with the classroom teacher, so they can step in, or as a teacher, if there's not, and Elaine and I are always on call for support. So, so far, so well, and our attendance rate for teachers is high, and the same for the students.
Could I ask, Ken, could you just give a general overview of what's proposed to start or is intended to start next week?
Yeah, it looked like Darius wanted to say something. I don't know, Darius, do you want to go first?
I missed that.
It'd be off-topic, so I was going to give an update on the antigen testing, so I'll give an overview of that afterwards. I don't want to lose stride here, what the subject we're talking about. Just remind me to do that.
So, overview of next week is we're launching our remote classroom. So, any family that selected remote only for their child will now have a remote classroom, and what that does is provide some consistency for that student's learning, because in the model that we have now, they go to their classroom teacher, and they may have students from other classrooms, and the pacing is really hard to keep up, because it's like every other day they're on. And then we're going to four days a week in person, so classroom teachers will be responsible for those in-person students that are in front of them. If we go remote, they will stay with their class, the classroom teachers will be remoting into those in-person students, and our remote classrooms will continue on as if nothing ever happened.
And just because of the letter that Missy wrote, she talked about the six-foot spacing and stuff, we're not, I'm giving you a softball question.
Thank you, yeah, keep doing that, that's helpful. So, we're continuing with our six-foot spacing. What we did with classrooms is, any classroom, if every child was to come back, if they were going to have more than 16 students, they have two spaces. So they still may only have eight students in person right now, but they still have two spaces in anticipation of more students coming back. So we are following, none of our safety procedures or precautions or spacing has changed. We all have six-foot social distancing. Some classrooms may only have one classroom, but they are, we can fit 16 desks in a classroom with the teacher with six-foot social distancing.
Okay.
And how many classrooms have, like, close to 16 in them?
Our highest number of students coming back, I believe, is 14, and we only have about two of those. I don't have the chart right in front of me.
There was an image that there were all these classrooms of 16, and that's not the correct, that's not the correct image.
Our, we have about 10, I would say the average is 10 students per classroom in person. We're very small class sizes, which also I think the teachers are feeling excited about, because they can meet with every student within a lesson period. So, that's one thing that we can thank the pandemic for, is our small groupings.
If there is a silver lining.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions or thoughts, or do we just want to leave everything in place? I'm open to hearing what the comments are from the committee, so, I mean.
I have a question, and I'm sorry, I should know this. Is there going to be this sort of after-the-break sort of cooling off, or whatever you want to call it, like there was after Thanksgiving?
The, well, Trevor, you could answer the Board of Health, but I'll give the general view of all the Boards of Health. How's that? So that way you don't speak for the Board of Health. How's that? The Board of Health is going to, you know, we're talking about whether or not we're going to have another meeting this week to look at numbers, because the numbers are still, they're still going up in the community, so, and then they were going to make a decision. They have a preset meeting for the 29th to discuss whether or not there needs to be a cooling off period after the holiday break. Great, Trevor?
Yes, that's right. And we're thinking, you know, it's a little different than Thanksgiving. There's already kind of a week built into the Christmas break, so, you know, we'll just kind of evaluate at that point. We just felt, we felt it was really you know, we'll just kind of evaluate at that point. We just felt it's, we felt it was really good to get the four towns kind of board of health meeting and, and, and we had a good group on the other night. So it was really nice to kind of have those conversations and everybody on the same page. And, um, uh, so we'll just evaluate it then. And again, if we need a meeting between, you know, the 29th and now, we'll just have a meeting anytime that, that we see it's needed or somebody calls for it. But I, I think it's a little different than Thanksgiving because it'll have a built-in week already. So I don't, I don't know if it's a little different Thanksgiving to, you know, a lot of times you have a lot of people traveling and coming where Christmas everyone kind of typically stays home or, you know, goes away skiing or something, but just a little bit different dynamic.
I just, yeah, I think it also just goes to the point that the school actually is a pretty controlled, safe environment. So this, I imagine there are counter arguments that, um, you know, they may be worse off at home if there is this milieu of stuff with all the, you know, families getting together. So.
Yeah, and we, you know, it was a, you know, it was kind of a, as I said at the board of health meeting, it was kind of, we've been doing, trying to do everything based on data and statistics and the, the week after Thanksgiving was really almost a little bit more of a gut intention, like intuition, like there's a lot of things moving and we're seeing things happen. Should we just take a break? Cause our whole goal is to keep us open as long as possible. And we felt like with that one week of remote, one with this elementary school, we could adjust and get ready for students coming back and teachers preparing their rooms for that. And then two, it just kind of gave us a little bit of idea to just kind of take a look and see what was happening in the community. But, you know, and, and so maybe we would make a different decision next time and not bother with a, with the week off, but it's really hard to make that right decision and it's wrong for half the people typically. So.
Yeah, you never know.
You really don't. It's, it's tough.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, any other questions out there or thoughts? I know Darius wanted to say something about the, uh, testing. If you remember.
Karen was going to say something first.
I was just going to jump in. I don't have a question. I just want to say I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm still comfortable going forward to four days a week, going to phase three. We're so lucky to have a building that can accommodate both cohorts at the same time, all the students. I don't see any reason why we can't take advantage of that. I don't see any drop, there are drop marks, of course. I don't see any, that the risk of having all the students back four days a week outweigh the risks of having all the kids home more. So I'm comfortable going forward this time.
And as, as Tina pointed out, it certainly gives it, gives them the opportunity to spend eight days seeing how things go, um, heading into what will be, you know, the after Christmas time. So, okay. Now we'll try, Darius, did you want to speak to the testing?
Yeah, basically the antigen testing, um, you know, we have, um, you know, we, we are, the process is a lot slower rollout than I thought. So I kind of maybe jumped the gun by spreading the news to the community so quickly. We are in the process of, I believe, Meg is being trained, our nurse leader is being traded, trained at the end of this week. You have to have the product from the state in order to get trained. So we're hoping we're going to receive it by the end of the week and then the first training and then we'll be able to train our nurses going into next week. There's a whole series of, we have to have permissions from parents. And so we're going to have to have an email that out and have people accept to do that ahead of time. One of the misconceptions about antigen testing is antigen testing, I'll break it down to my level, which is very basic, which I think people probably appreciate. Is it antigen is, is testing for antibodies? And so your body has to be creating antibodies in order for it to show up. It's not testing to see if you have COVID. It's testing to see if your body's reacting to COVID. And so if you're not symptomatic, that's why it's not a very, I mean, like that's a crappy test. It is a crappy test for the, unless you have, unless you're experiencing symptoms, your body's creating antibodies. So it really, what it does is just an indicator that you, your body's creating antibodies and you have COVID so that we can move more quickly to identify, um, close contacts and not have to wait two days and then have those close contacts, being talked to other people and you, that kind of spread and that kind of thing. So when you send a child home, where you're sending a child home sick for the day, we have an indicator right then and there because the child's symptomatic. We are not a testing site and anytime we send someone home after taking this test, they will have to go get a PCR test. So people should, there was this concern that people were like, oh, I'll send my child to school sick so they can get tested. No, we're going to send you to get a PCR test no matter what. If you take the, the antigen test, either you're going to quarantine or you're going to get the test. You're going to get the PCR test where you're going to have to go somewhere else to get that. And so that part, I'm saying it out loud tonight for those watching, though it's not, it's not the greatest thing since sliced bread, but it does allow us to move more quickly where right now if a child goes home, we have to wait 24, 48 hours for a test result to come back. And this will allow us to be able to know more quickly if we have to be doing more, um, in that area or a staff member within that. And the other thing that was missed, uh, out there is that we only get 40 tests. Um, no, we get 40 tests per kit. We're allowed up to 16 kits. Per place. So, you know, we got, we get quite a few. So again, it's not for mass testing. We're not going to have everybody come in and do a mass testing because it doesn't work unless your body's making antibodies for the test. And so you could lick it, it could say no, and you could have COVID. That's why you will still go get a COVID, a full COVID test because your body may not have created enough antibodies at that point in time, may not be sick enough, so to speak. Or your body's creating a smaller amount of antibodies or whatever your body does when it's sick. So that's kind of in general about that. So we're, we're hoping to have, I think it's next week to be able to start to, roll it out, um, and, and so forth. So that's where we're at.
It's helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Darius. Um, do we have any other thoughts or comments from the committee? I just wanted to, to say that we've, we've focused largely on the, um, probably the second public comment as opposed to the CPAC letter in this conversation. And, uh, I know that Darius and his team are working, you know, hard to try and smooth out the bumps on the special education side with the high need students and their needs. And, uh, at the same time, work it so that it's working within the, the confines of the staffing and resources that we have available to meet those needs. And, uh, I, I'm confident that the communication will improve to that community and to the, for those students and services hopefully will continue to be as strong as they can be for that, uh, that group of students. So.
Again, I think you, you hit that on the head. I mean, it's a difficult, we, you know, we built this model that we can be able to go remote and there are certain learners, um, and even outside of our specialized populations, that don't do well with remote and can't make adequate progress in remote. And we've known that and that's why we, we prioritize getting students, um, back in the building for that. It is a difficult, it is a difficult thing to manage when another, an outside group, the board of health is making decisions that are based on data, that's live data that you can't prepare for. So we can only do so much preparation ahead of time. The, the kind of the concern about teachers being in the building, well, teachers can come in the building and work in an empty classroom. They're not increasing exposure. You know what I mean? So I know they were upset that teachers were allowed in the building, but students weren't, but it's not the building, it's the interactions. And, you know, so we are trying to build plans in, um, in place for those, you know, our most vulnerable learners. And to get them in the buildings, but it's also if you're closing down the building because going remote model because of the level of safety concerns, but you're having some students in, it's a, you know, it's not as easy as just rolling out a plan and everybody says, oh, that's exactly what we have to do. So there's a lot of talking with teachers and working about we have to do increase any safety measures during that time. And that's what we're working out. On the side, you know, in preparation, if there's another one coming after the holiday break, you know, you know, if we're going to do another shutdown, can we get those vulnerable learners in? And so we're going to put something together so that the board of health can look at that and agree to not just everyone go remote, which was the first, which was last week, but can we have some exceptions to that to get some certain amount? But that's a, that's a complicated balance. And I just want, I want to say that out loud because it's not just that, you know, we're not listening, we're not hearing, we're not taking action, we're not caring. It's just, it's a, it's a complicated thing to move when you're talking about health issues that, you know, the staff are, are amongst those, of those people that are, um, are affected by that.
And it's, and it's, um, it is difficult because I know that, um, you know, as I sit on this committee and we're in the school environment, we're, we're, we're focused on learning. And when I wear a different hat, I'm focused on health and the health of the community. So education really isn't in my purview when it comes to that. Um, I, I'm, I'm really focused on just the data and the health. And, um, so it, it is very difficult. I know in this environment, they, they go together, you know, hand in glove. Um, and, and we really care about, you know, making sure that we have those supports available, you know, for that. And, and when I'm sitting at a board of health desk, I'm really just focusing on the health and I'm not really interested. I am, but my focus is on health decisions and not education decisions. So it's, it's tough to be, you know, normally you wouldn't be sitting on both boards, but, uh, so what do you like? I get pulled in, in different directions, but I just, you know, to support the administration, it's the board of health is making that decision and they're not really looking at the education port, part of it. Um, and, and that's unfortunate, but that's really kind of, we're just focusing, okay, like safety and health. And then when we get to the school committee, we're looking at how do we support those, those families? Cause that's really important. That's the whole reason I'm like, let's get kids back at school. So, because I know how difficult it is for those families. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. Uh, Mary, I see you.
Good. Um, I would both like to ask, and I think it's already starting to happen, but the increased collaboration between the board of health and the school committee. I know that your communication with Darius is excellent, probably almost daily. Um, but when that decision was made, I wasn't aware of the meeting. And so we hear about it after the fact, not that we as, uh, thinking of the educational part of it would have input because it's a board of health thing, but I didn't have the advantage of hearing the rationale and your data. So when you run into community members, they think it was a vote of the school committee. I explained it was a vote of the board of health, but I couldn't really explain anything beyond that. So I think it's important that the board of health communicates with the school committee as well as with various.
Thank you for that point.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. So everyone knows I, you know, uh, well, I'll share that Mary and I had that conversation and I made sure that you guys were all invited to Fridays and that, and moving forward to any discussions. You'll receive emails invites to those meetings.
Great.
Thank you.
And, okay. Any, anything else, folks? If not, we'll, we'll go back to A under unfinished business, uh, unfinished business and welcome Kelsey, Kelsey Crop to give us an update on the anti racism and equity committee. Welcome again, Kelsey.
Hi, everybody. It's good to see you all. Um, so just some kind of brief updates. Um, the, I'm sorry, my dog's shaking over there. So high school has our fourth meeting with Radical Empathy Consulting out of UMass tomorrow. So the last couple of sessions have been on, um, social identity versus personal identity and doing that kind of self-awareness work. Um, and now we're going to start moving towards, um, understanding the context of our own individual identities within the school and then how that impacts our students and kind of moving, moving towards the bigger picture from there. The elementary schools at the moment are, they've completed their professional development for the, or their anti racism professional development for the first semester. They will be continuing in the second semester, focusing more on classroom implementation. Again, the first semester was more of that critical self-awareness work. Um, and so they'll be working with Amanda and I believe someone from, um, the collaborative, working on, okay, now we've done that self-reflection piece, how does that translate into what this looks like in the classroom? For curriculum, the eighth grade at Frontier Regional is, I believe, about halfway through stamped. Um, and that's been going well. We've gotten some pushback, but over well, over, overall, it's been received pretty well. Um, and there's some really, um, some really exciting conversations happening and students really engaging with that material in a very positive way. Um, and they also watched Hidden Figures right before the Thanksgiving break as part of their science and math curriculum, which also went over really well. Um, there were some really fruitful discussions and interesting reflections that a lot of our, our young students had. So that was really cool. The elementary schools have created a, a universal glossary of terms so that all, all four of the elementary schools can be using the same terms and definitions. So that will be distributed shortly. And then five books per grade level have been selected. And so those will be moving into the classrooms in the second semester as we're doing that PD with the classroom implementation. So those are books. Um, the intention is for those to be available in classrooms as like free reading, um, for our like four, fourth, fifth, sixth grader, or fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. Um, and then sort of circle time, story time for our younger grades. Um, and all of those books feature, um, characters of color, um, and talk about, um, themes of anti racism and inclusion and diversity. For our school culture committee, we have an update from the Communities That Care Coalition about their advancing anti racism in schools, um, initiative. So in January, they are going to be doing a district assessment of what we're already doing, um, and what is already in place, highlighting strengths and weaknesses and giving us some recommendation for next steps. And then in February and March, they will be, um, facilitating student focus groups to kind of hear from students themselves, what's your take? What do you think about your school? Um, and kind of getting feedback from students who are actually, you know, boots on the ground, so to speak. And our school policy folks, um, have been working on recommendations for revisions to student handbooks. And at this point, they've reached a place where they're looking for student feedback. They've identified some sections that they'd really like to have student voices be heard and have students be involved, um, in the writing of some of those policies. Since this is something that impacts them on a daily basis. And then they are shortly sending out a staff survey to check for understanding on our policies around, um, the discipline and follow-up procedures for, uh, instances of hate speech. The feedback that we've been getting is that from a discipline perspective, um, the policy is pretty solid, but we're missing sort of a, a two-pronged approach where we need to be focused on the student who experienced the incident as well. There needs to be a little bit more of a, a care component for them in addition to the discipline component, um, for the student to, was involved in the events. I think that's about everything. Does anyone have questions about what's going on, um, or where we're headed in the future?
Is, is there also a kind of an educational, you know, along with the discipline and discipline part of that hate speech, is there also kind of like a, this is why, and, and, and more of an educational part that goes along with it instead of just discipline?
So I can't speak specifically to the elementary schools, but I know for a fact the high school, yes.
Good.
That's definitely part of the, the incident. It's like, okay, you said this and you know, you, you can't say that and this is why.
Right.
So I would imagine that that is also true at the elementary schools. Uh, but that is also part of the purpose of the survey is to make sure, to make sure that that is the case and to make sure that everyone is aware, um, and is kind of following the same procedure.
I think you're doing great work. So awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yes, thank you, Kelsey, for, uh, that great update. And it sounds like real progress is being made, which is nice. Look forward to hearing more as we progress through the next half of the year about how the students are reacting to the books and how the teachers are finding it, um, in, integrating things into the classroom. So thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
You're very welcome. Thanks for having me.
Okay. Let's move on to new business. The FY22 budget discussion, I think we may have already had it. Did we, Shelley? The fact that you're working on numbers and we'll have them for January.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add unless you have comments or, or questions or looking for other information.
I, I think this is enough of an unusual year that, um, certainly what, what you've laid out sounds like it will work for me and most likely it will work for the town and finance committee and board of selectmen because I'm sure they're not in their normal, um, mode yet on budgets. Uh, we're, heck, we haven't even still settled the FY21 budget. I don't think the state numbers are, are out there, but I'm not sure, you know, how much more is going to happen with them. So anyways, thank you again. And thanks for the, the report earlier. Things look good and I appreciate all the work you're doing, Shelley, you and your team are doing to give us information and, and everything that's going on. So. your team are doing to give us information and, and everything that's going on. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, school improvement plan. F2021, uh, school improvement plan. Tina?
So I sent that to you guys ahead of time because it's, um, lengthy. I'm kind of giggling because Darius said you can cut some of that out. And I was like, no, we're working out of it all. I want to keep it in there. Um, but with COVID and the pandemic, if the improvement plan has been adapted to focus on some of the key indicators and the high priority, um, topics that come up such as like the anti-racism and equity, uh, professional development that we're doing, focusing on some of the learning gaps because of the closure, some of the social emotional needs, and also some of that community outreach if there's any families that are struggling. So, um, you'll notice that some of it is similar to last year, but then we have some new goals and objectives in there.
And the, the improvement plan is put together. Uh, do you want to talk about how it's been put together and who participates and?
It's just me. No, we met with the school council. Uh, the school council met, this was a year, this was a two-year plan. So we had worked with surveys and, um, with the faculty and staff the year prior. We did survey families at the end of last year, I believe it was. And then I met with the school council this year and, um, we revised it together, sent it out for their approval, sent it to faculty and staff.
Okay.
It's, I think realistically, I mean, we had a disrupted year last year. So, you know, really the, the mode worked, the pull, some of the, it's a two-year plan also because those, we weren't able to complete our goals last spring.
Right.
And then depending on the other work that we're doing, it's still, I think it's a little too lengthy. I told Tina that she really needed to cut it down, I think. Um, but they are all things that are being worked on. So it's not, it's not a laundry list of things to do. It's things that they're doing. So I think that's, um, it's, uh, impressive.
I, I agree. I think there's a lot in the plan and a lot that the school is, that you're, you and your team are undertaking, Tina, um, and the community is undertaking. So, uh, congratulations on that. Do we need to vote to accept it, correct? Um, so I don't know if people have questions or if someone would like a motion, make a motion to approve the 2020, 2020 dash 2021 school improvement plan as presented. Or we can just be silent. Everybody's muted.
Does it need to be voted at this meeting? Do we have a little time to?
Sure. If we, if people want to take time to review it, I think we can review it next meeting. I mean, uh, vote on it next meeting. Does that make sense to everybody?
Well, it'd save time if we voted on it now, but, uh,
Yeah.
I just feel like, Well, you know, I do, but, and I trust that everything is in here well, but I just feel like it would be good to kind of just give it a quick read.
Okay. Deeper read. How about you, Carrie?
Deeper read.
See, you're, you're unmuted, Carrie. Are you meaning to speak?
Oh, no. Fighting with the button earlier. Nope.
Oh, okay. All right.
As far as the school goes, I mean, we're working on this anyway. So a week or two is not going to, or a month is not going to stop us. And I'm speaking out of her.
What are you saying, Principal Jim? It doesn't matter if you guys vote this? We're already moving forward on it?
Technically, yes. But if you would like me to add more, Trevor.
No, no.
Not with Darius first.
No, I, I agree.
No, no, no. Okay.
If you want to take time to review it, that's fine. We normally do vote it in the same night, um, just because it's an overview of what we're working on. But, um, we're fine. We can, we can do it next month, too. It's not a big deal.
I certainly, if everyone, you know, feels like we're, we're good to go, I'm, I'm fine, too. I just didn't know other people wanted more time, too. So, that's all.
It's up to you, Trevor.
So I make a motion to approve the Deerfield Elementary School 2019, 2021 School Improvement Plan.
And David, or Carrie, second. All right. And, uh, any further discussion? If I, if I hear none, then I'll take a vote. Ken Cutterback, yes. David Sharp?
Yes.
Um, Carrie Echols?
Yes.
Uh, Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
Okay, we have a unanimous yes. Thank you all. Um, this next item, C mural discussion. Um, I asked Tina, or Tina and I were talking about this a little bit, and I, I said, why don't we put it on the agenda just to alert people? There has been a, a question raised or a comment made on the, on the mural in the cafeteria entrance, entryway. And, um, there's been a great, actually a great deal of background conversation going on between Tina and Julie Cavaco and various members of the Deerfield community, um, more the historical community. Um, Tim Newman has been weighing in and others as we've tried to do, as they tried to do a little bit of research. And I, I sort of came into the conversation late. Um, but there was some, some discussion about the mural, uh, a, a person or persons raised some questions about its, uh, accuracy and whether it's appropriate and suggested, you know, possibly having it removed or some, something along those lines. Um, and Tina's done a nice job, I think, of, of handling it. Tina and Julie, I should mention, who has, has really spearheaded the effort of keeping communications going. Uh, so that where we stand now is, um, we're still just in the sort of a conversation mode, I believe, Tina. Um, but Tina has looked into the possibility of moving the mural and possibly adding some, um, I, I don't know what you'd call, you know, some information that sits alongside the mural so that people can see the origins of the mural, what it's meant to represent. Um, we can see about upgrading it and various other things. But I thought it was important to let the committee know that there's sort of a background conversation taking place. Um, I have my feelings on, on the mural and, uh, not just because, um, I was part of the building committee and we were all, and Mary, myself, uh, not many of the other, Elaine and, and others were, were here when the school was, uh, went through the process of being approved and everything else. But, uh, anyways, I, I just thought I'd let people know that there was a conversation going on in the background, um, not intended to keep it below the surface or anything else. It was something that just sort of came to Tina's desk and, uh, Julie Cavaco got involved and that's where it stands. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or thoughts, um, but please feel free to pitch in.
I have a question. Just, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to know about this or not, but I really have, I have no idea what you're talking about, uh, in the sense that I know there's a mural, but maybe you want to say like, what, what is the controversy or what should we take from this? Um, that you're telling us.
Um, I, I'm not privy or I have not, I don't think I've read yet, Tina, what the original communication was on it. Maybe you could just fill in on the, on the start of the whole process. And then, I mean, the people that have been corresponding are many of, most of them are not even associated with the school at this day and age. You know, it's ranged from Doug Tierney to retired teachers that have been gone for 20 years, um, to, uh, citizens that helped with the initial efforts. So the mural is the one that you remember walking in, David. Um, I'm just filling that, that piece of it. That mural was commissioned by Historic Deerfield, um, and painted by a, uh, local artist, uh, named, named David Glooman, who's an Amherst College professor. Um, and David spent, um, quite a bit of time, uh, on the commission, um, putting the mural together. Um, and just, uh, I'll, I'll turn it over to Tina at that point in time. So.
Sure. The, um, conversation is around it being an inappropriate, um, depiction of history. And so what they say is European American settlers privilege, it's a, um, a European American settler privileged view of the colonization of America in Deerfield. So that's what's at the, the heart of it. But Julie Cavaco, um, Ken, thank you for bringing that up. Julie has spent a large amount of time researching, um, reaching out to people who are, have been in contact and really has the history of it. And the history, the, the mural was meant to depict the history of the land we share as Deerfield. And she has prepared to create, create a storyline to go with the mural. Um, we do not intend to destroy the mural. Um, in some of Julie's, um, research, it's actually inappropriate. It's not in a location that it was meant to be viewed. It's intended to be viewed from a distance. So some of the conversation we're talking about is relocating it and then, um, creating a new mural based on some social justice and equity values. So in the end, we'll end up with two murals. So get around with that.
Sounds good.
Right. So.
And to David's, to David's original question, some of the excitement, I think, early on was there was a, um, offering to paint over the mural, which obviously would immediately people were, there was a thing of that there's, there's more to the story than, than just the Native Americans on the, on the, on the wall depicted appropriately or depicted in a different time, from a different time period, you know, that kind of. So, um, I think that was what got a lot of people kind of energies going because it was a, it represents a time period in the town of Deerfield. Um, this is my educate, being educated by Ken, uh, bringing the two towns, basically the north and the south side of towns together into one elementary school. And that's, so there's a lot of other energies in our community. And when someone said, what's paint over it, you know, so we're kind of, that's not going to happen. Okay. And you're going to, we're going to work with, with everybody and, and come to some.
Sounds like Julie is well on the way to making it a teachable moment.
Yeah, I love that.
Absolutely. And Tina has embraced that opportunity as well. So, so, and I've communicated with any number of people I hadn't talked to in quite a few years, last month. So, uh, so that would, that was that. Um, we're down to, uh, reports. The, the chair, chair has nothing to report at this point in time. Um, the principal's report, we received a copy. Tina, did you want to read through it or review it? Or how would you like to proceed?
Sure. I'll be quick because I feel like I've gotten a lot of airtime this meeting. Um, so hydration stations, our bubblers now are outfitted with water bottle filling systems, every single one of, so that's six of our, um, oh my gosh, bubblers.
That's great.
And that should be done by the end of this week. And then we have 24 smart panels that are replacing our current outdated audio, visual, visual setups that were, um, were all installed last week. So we are moving forward. Chromebook updates. Um, we have not received our shipment yet. However, I've been, huh, I guess the word would be annoying, Scott. And so we are receiving all the middle school Chromebooks that do not have cameras. So every student will have a, a Chromebook, but they might not have a camera. So I said I would take them. Nobody else wanted them. I got to him first and I annoyed him. So that's where we're at with that. Um, and I just want to shout out to our communities for partnering with us and supporting DES families. Huge thank you to Colleen Smith, our school counselor, and Nancy Traut, an educator, for soliciting, collecting and distributing donations from our local farms, faculty and staff, and community organizations to provide over tw- uh, 25 families with Thanksgiving meals. So thanks to Columbus and Deerfield, Wager Farms in Deerfield and Baraway Farms were, um, big donators this year. So that was a great thing. And then families have organized a car parade to show some love and appreciation for the faculty and staff tomorrow at two. So those are some of the community outreach things that are happening.
That's, that's great. Thank you, Tina. And you, this time of year, thank you to your faculty, staff, your whole team. It's just amazing. Um, so I'm glad that the community is reaching out to support you as well. Darius? Would you like to make a report? Did you, still here?
Me myself. That's the first. The, um, no, I don't have a report.
That's fine.
Okay. Certainly the conversation we've had is, is enough to update us on what you've been up to. So, um, anybody else have anything?
Ken, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I don't have a collaborative report. There's no, um,
Collaborative, I'm sorry. I skipped right over.
That's okay. Usually I know a lot of Darius ones. I just want to say for anyone who has not heard, Bill Deal is stepping down and retiring this month.
Oh, no.
After many years.
Oh, my gosh.
Uh, he will be missed. There's, uh, Karen, yeah, Karen Reuters, she's in the acting, no, she's, she will be the acting director. She's been, um, deputy director for the past year or so now. Uh, so she'll be taking over at the interim and then they're continuing the search for a new director. But, uh, done an amazing job and we missed, but I think we're in good hands going forward.
Great.
Okay. Thank you for that. My apologies for not, I skipped right over you.
Ken, can I just ask just a really quick question? I'm just curious.
Absolutely.
Don't even spend time on this, but just are the other elementary schools in Union 38 on the same, um, schedule, school schedule in terms of, um, four days a week starting out?
No. We can give you more detail on that. So, um, different dynamics in different buildings. Um, and as they, they're going through them right now, um, Conway is close to already at a hundred, close to a hundred percent already back four days a week. Um, because of their, their size, they were able to, um, kind of evolve that way. And so it's not a, they're doing a, they're doing the final change. Their phase three is to get everybody. There was a couple of grade levels there that, um, were not completely back. So it's getting those two grade levels in. Um, so they will be in the same boat as Deerfield. Wheatley's still working on their plan. Um, they're, they have some small school issues in the sense of not having enough staff to do what's happening at Deerfield. Um, we, uh, Conway being the same size school had some, had some staffing abilities that Wheatley doesn't. And so they're, they're still working out what their plan's going to be. That's going to happen in January. And then Sunderland's an interesting one because Sunderland already has about 60 to 70% of their, um, hybrid learners in, um, four days a week. So they have 50 something of their 90 something, um, uh, students who are considered vulnerable students in four days a week. So they're, they're working on to see what that looks like, expanding that. Um, and so they're still working on that there. So everybody's kind of in a different spot based on the different needs. But also understand that Sunderland also is a 45, 55 split, unlike, um, percentage wise. So they, they have the closest amount of student, the most students that are remote out of all of our, out of all the schools in our district. So, um, and then Frontier is, um, they have a middle school and high school and they're trying to bring back a third day. And that's been kind of delayed going into, I think they're pushing that off to January now. So, um, that's kind of where they're at there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, if I'm not hearing any, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second? Anybody unmuted? Carrie, you're unmuted. Do you want a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Ken Cutterback, yes. David Sharp?
Yes.
Carrie Echols? She keeps freezing up on me. Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. I want to wish everyone very happy holiday season. Elaine, thank you for joining us this evening. I know you didn't get a chance to chat, but, uh, or talk, but, um, it was good to see you, you're online. And, uh, we'll see everyone next year.